Meeting for today pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.021 will be conducted in a video conference format and livestream for public viewing. A local state of emergency has been declared due to an ongoing health pandemic. The regular meeting location, the Scott County Boardroom, is closed to the PGL. The meeting will be live webcast on YouTube. A link to the Scott County YouTube video can be found on the official county website homepage located at www.sott county minnesota.gov.
Okay.
Did you say Gary Hartman?
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Hensches.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Vannoff.
Here.
And Commissioner Watson. Commissioner.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Robbie are absent without notice at this time.
Thank you very much. The county staff president, Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner. Also Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board. And let's see right now. If I'm missing anyone, I will get them later. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the May 11th, 2020 Planning Advisory Commission meeting. And all the commissioners been sent to the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Now I will enter to approve the minutes of the May 11th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hensches. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Watson. All in favor, we will do roll call vote on all the votes this evening. Sorry to ask.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hensches.
Yes.
Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Huber. And Commissioner Watson.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Johnson, did I not hear you?
I did say yes.
There's six I, and then Ed Robbie appears to still be absent at this time.
Commissioner Vannhoff, you're shown still on mute. If you could unmute and then you can go to the consent agenda item.
It's showing that I'm not muted right now.
Yep, now we can hear you.
What's that?
You're good now.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. All items are considered by the planning to be routine and will be at. These items unless a planning commission board member or a public member so it would be considered separately. The first item, number 31, is a public hearing. Bruce Coke and the application numbers 2020-022. It's a request, a two-part request. The first part is to rezone 50.12 acres from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to A3 Agricultural Preservation Density District. The second part be to request for preliminary plant and final plat of Johnson Family Ridge consisting of one lot and two outlots on 50.12 acres in the A3 district. Location is Section 27 Blakely Township and current zoning is A1. Would any of the commissioners or anyone else like to remove that from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Hearing no one coming forward with that, I will go on to the second item on the consent agenda. It's a public hearing. The Web Pallet Services is the applicant. The number is 2020-013. It's a request for a conditional use permit amendment to construct an office building and other site alterations. Location is Section 4 Sand Creek Township. The current zoning is I1. Would any of the commissioners or any other person like to remove that from the consent agenda to be considered separately? In a motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda at this time.
Mr. Commissioner, based upon the criteria, I would approve the consent agenda recognizing the township as approved, both of them as well.
Second by Commissioner Hartman.
Motion by Commissioner Watson, a second by Commissioner Hartman. And I will now turn it over to Barb Simonson to do a roll call vote at this time on the consent agenda to approve.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hensches. Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Johnson. We didn't hear you that one. And Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes with six I.
It's a Highway 169 commercial plat, number 2017-003. It's a request for a preliminary plat for Highway 169 Commercial Subdivision consisting of six lots on 40 acres. Location is Section 21 Louisville Township and the current zoning is C1. And I see Marty Schmitz will be making the staff presentation on this. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On the screen is the site location map for the 37 acres proposed for the plat of Highway 169 Commercial Plat. The location of the property is to the east of Johnson Memorial Drive or Highway 169, to the south of 133rd Street and Lano Implement, that's located right here, to the west of the residential subdivisions of Harvest Moon and August Sky over here, and then to the north of a couple industrial buildings to the south and one residential property here. You can see on this map that there is a right away through the property. This is Louisville Road. Louisville Road was constructed last year as part of the 16941 County Road 78 Interchange Project and frontage roads. So the county did construct that road last year through the parcel, and that enabled this plat to move forward now this year. We'll jump to an aerial photograph. Again, you can see that frontage road, it's, this is a 2019 aerial photo, so it only looks like it's graded here, but that road is constructed and open to the public now. 169 here again on the west side of the plat. This is Anchor Block, and this is Brian Rock Products here to the quest of 169. And this is the residential development of August Sky and Harvest Moon, which predominantly two and a half acre residential parcels. As I said, this property is zoned C1 commercial, so there's no rezoning as part of this application. From the site, you can see that the northern two-thirds of the parcel are open land, agricultural land. The southern third of the parcel is more wooded. This area here that you see where the grading has taken place, that's a large stormwater facility that the county also constructed as part of this Louisville Road project. There's a large amount of water that comes from the east through this site and then goes under 169 and then towards the river. In order to manage the water, the rate at which it goes under 169, this large stormwater pond was necessary. Also on the southern end of this plat, we approved an interim use permit for Ames Construction to have a borrow site down here. We did that in the fall of 2018, and the material is being used on this 1694178 Interchange Project, the 14 overpass and the frontage roads. That borrow site is coming to the end of its life, and Ames is getting ready to reclaim the property. Part of the reason this plat is moving forward today is in order to reclaim that mine site in conformance with the plat rather than in conformance with the approved reclamation plan. So rather than grading it twice, only grade it once to comply with the plat. We're going to go to a copy of the preliminary plat now. So here's the preliminary plat. 169 here again on the west Louisville Road extending through the property, the residential development on the east. There are two lots located between Louisville Road and Highway 169 on the north end, and there are four lots located on the east side of Louisville Road between Louisville Road and the residential property on the south end. See if I can zoom in a little bit here. So one kind of interesting or one item that we need to deal with on the plat is there is a 200-foot utility easement that extends through the property here. This is an NSP overhead power line easement. You can see that right here. So it mainly affects this lot three, block two on the site, but it does make that parcel a little bit tighter for development. Also, the contours get much steeper down here on the southern end of the property where the woods are also that is another item that has to be dealt with with the development. The applicant has identified a building pad and primary and alternate drain field site on each of the lots. The Environmental Health Office has reviewed these primary and alternate drain field sites. They are asking for a few more borings to be done on the property, and I think the applicant was in the process of doing that. Generally, the soils out here are pretty sandy, so they're pretty well suited for onsite septic. One other comment that they had are a number of the proposed septic systems on this lot three are located within this power line easement. So the applicant does need to get a letter from NSP giving them the okay to locate those drain field sites within that power line easement. In addition, here's the large stormwater pond that the county constructed as part of the frontage road through this property. Because of that large stormwater pond, Lot 4 down here on the southern end of the property has to be accessed via a common driveway through Lot 3. So they will need to provide an easement for Lot 4 through Lot 3 as part of the recording of the plat. That easement will be, need to be recorded also. I'm going to move now to a grading plan. So here's the grading for the northern portion of the plat, the two lots between 169 and the frontage road here, and two northern lots between, I think it's Harvest Moon on this end of the plat and Louisville Frontage Road. Again, you can see the applicant has identified building pads on all of the lots. These lots vary from two and a half acres in size up to 17 acres in size. They have also identified stormwater features within this portion of the plat to accommodate stormwater off of these lots. Stormwater generally runs from the north to the south to the large pond that the county This is the grading on the southern end of the plat, the two lots on the southern end. So Lot 3 here with the power line easement, and Lot 4 down here. Right now, they're proposing a stormwater pond here on Lot 3. Part of the grading for the stormwater facility actually extends up into that power line easement also. So they were going to need to get approval from NSP for that grading in the utility easement, also for this access road which moves through that utility easement to these parcels. There is, because of the slopes on this property, there is a number of retaining walls that are necessary to create these building pads. So they are showing a six-foot tall retaining wall here along the east side of these buildings, and this is meant to minimize the grading on the parcels, and it allows them to retain as much vegetation on these parcels as they can to essentially help screen the commercial development from the residential development to the east. There's also a retaining wall here on the south side. What the applicants are indicating is that is up to 11 feet in height. Commissioner Huber did call me on this this afternoon. He asked if that retaining wall was actually the backside of these buildings or if it was separate from the buildings itself. I did confirm with the applicant's engineer that the retaining wall would incorporate the backside of these buildings, so you wouldn't have a retaining wall and then buildings starting five feet from that retaining wall. The township did hear this request at their meeting last Thursday night. They did recommend approval of the preliminary plat subject to conditions of their township engineer, which are here. There's 17 conditions that the township engineer had. The applicant was present at that township meeting, so they are aware of what those conditions are. The township also had an additional condition that the Shakopee Fire Chief reviewed the plat and commented on the plat prior to board action. So we have given a copy of the plat to the fire chief for review and comment. Last thing I would like to go over here is the landscaping plan. As we talked about earlier, the southern part of the site is pretty well wooded down here, which will help screen the lots from that residential property. The northern part of the property is void of trees. Our ordinance requires a green belt planting strip between commercial and industrial development and residential lots. So the applicant has had a landscape architect design a green belt planting strip along the northern, essentially the northern half of this property that essentially accomplishes an 80% opaque visual screen at a height of six feet from those residential properties, and that is in compliance with the county's requirement there. Other than that, I will stand for any questions. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat subject to the conditions in the staff
Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Do planning commissioners have any questions regarding this application?
Mr. Chair, it's Barbara Johnson. I understand that that house will have to be removed in five years.
Commissioner Johnson, there is no house on this particular property. There was a house on the Web Pallet request that was previous on the agenda, however, that the recommendation was to remove that home within five years.
Sorry, I knew I saw it someplace.
Commissioner Hensches, there are so many issues that still have to be resolved. I mean, we will see this again. This is just for a preliminary plat, correct? There's so many conditions that need to be met by.
Commissioner Hensches, there are a number of conditions that need to be resolved. We have the requirements from our Environmental Health Office related to the onsite septic. They're pretty confident those can be addressed, especially the boring information. The one issue that's really up the NSP is if they're going to give approval to locate those septic systems, the access road, and the stormwater facility within that utility easement, and the applicant could probably speak to that. The other requirements that the township engineer raised, I think those are certainly addressable prior to taking the preliminary plat to county board. The conditions are the conditions of the natural resource nurse's engineer at the county on the stormwater. I believe those can also be easily addressed prior to board action here. The county has offered to the applicant, we do have some excess capacity in that large stormwater pond that was constructed here, so it is possible that the stormwater from lots three and four could be funneled through that pond. The county will be maintaining that pond longer term, and we would enter into some type of maintenance agreement with the developer if they choose to go that route. But we do feel that with this layout, we can address all of the conditions that have been raised. The one that's, we don't have much control over is what's NSP going to say about improvements within their easement, and maybe one of the developers could speak to that.
Thank you, Marty.
Anybody hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Jess.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jess Moding. I'm one of the developers specifically for lots three and four. I have been in contact with NSP. I actually have an old letter of approval based on a similar plat. However, I thought it would be prudent to have them finalize their letter regarding finalized plat. So unfortunately, the person that we're working with is no longer there, so it's taken a little bit longer for them to pick up. But they are in process of review and showing concern with the way that we have it laid out again now. Also, just over in Amler Park, we did a similar easement underneath the same set of power lines for a septic for residential development a year ago, so this is pretty commonplace
And I would check with Brad, has there been any public input? This is a public hearing this time.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we did just receive an email a few minutes ago from Audrey Morante. She lives at 13610 Skyline Circle. Her comment is that the new plan, Highway 169, sits behind her home. Her home is covered by trees, and they want to understand if their home value will be negatively impacted by the request to build below and what trees or covers will be built. Please explain the impact to the homeowners on the hill. And then she's just asking for some more clarification on the plan, so maybe we can get her an email copy of the plans so they're a little clearer. But her first question, I don't know if we can answer about the value.
Yeah, so this property is zoned commercial, so the applicant is developing it in compliance with the comprehensive plan that designates the area along 169 to be commercial. So it is really being developed in compliance with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance that have been adopted. With regard to the trees, I know the applicant is going to maintain the trees along the southern portion of the property. You can kind of see a tree line here. It is my understanding that the septic sites down here on the south end are alternate sites, so they won't be used initially unless there's a problem with the primary site. So all these trees should remain in place along this portion of the property, and then the green belt planting strip would start once that vegetation, you know, runs out up here to the north, and that would be planted along the property line. And that consists of a variety of evergreens, deciduous trees, and shrubs.
Mr. Chair, this is Greg Wagner. That's the only question we have in our email box as you guys discuss. I will keep monitoring that, and I'll let you know if we get anything else.
At this time, I entertain, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman makes a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I think it was, was it Chris Watson who seconded it?
Correct.
At this time, I'll take a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hensches.
Yes.
Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Huber. Your mic is on now. Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Vannoff. And Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this closed. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this application before us from the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Johnson, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Highway 169 Commercial Plat, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions that must be satisfactorily addressed prior to county board consideration of the project. Further noting that the Louisville Township Board has recommended approval. Their engineers made various conditions and that the Shakopee Fire Department must approve.
Thank you. I have a motion, Commissioner Johnson. I believe there was a second. Which Commissioner?
Hartman.
I will call for the roll call vote on the motion for us.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber? Robbie? Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Main managers.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Brad was unable to attend tonight. I do have the quick update. Just a couple things went to the county board on the May 19 meeting. The board did approve the request for a conditional use permit amendment for Demcon companies to combine their facilities in Section 21 Louisville Township, and they also approved the request to rezone 39 acres from urban expansion reserve to urban expansion reserve cluster for the Paul Family Trust in Section 16 of Sand Creek Township. Those were the only two items that we sent to the board. That is really the extent of the update we have.
Wagner, okay. Thank you very much for that. Unless there's any other business, I would look for a motion to close the meeting at this time.
Commissioner Hartman, make a motion to close the meeting?
I have a motion by Commissioner Hartman. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Robbie, second.
Commissioner Robbie is second, and I will have call the
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber? Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanoff? Commissioner Vanoff, did you catch that? And Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
That's six ayes.
Very much. We are adjourned at this time. I'd like to thank all the commissioners and everyone else in the applicant as well. Thank you. Have a good night.